This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for May 22, 2018. To begin this evening, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are here with us in attendance are welcome to address the board on any matter. We ask that you raise your hand and be recognized and you may address a question, a comment, or make a statement. Is there anyone in our crowd this evening that would care to do so? That crowd is going to be speaking on another matter, so seeing that we have none for public participation, we will move on. Board, may I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Julianne, seconded by Martha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion, please, then, for approval of minutes for both the May 8, 2018 business meeting and also the May 15, 2018 annual election and budget vote in the memo from Kim.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Marv and seconded by Andrea. Any additions or corrections or deletions to the business meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We have a number of reports this evening because it's that time of the year. To start with, we welcome Dr. Baker to introduce the Social Studies Program Evaluation.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. I have really the easy job tonight in that it's just really to remind the community, we have a program evaluation process that we're extremely proud of. Each year, we evaluate a variety of our programs. We're on a five-year cycle. As we brought to you in our last meeting, our CTE in our health program eval, tonight we finish up this year's evaluations with social studies and art. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Dr. Mark Sacks and Andrea Castanza, board members who were a part of the committee. We're always thrilled that board members, when they do participate on that, and they're going to kick out this evaluation. So, Dr. Sacks and Andrea Castanza.
You're going to have to bear with my voice, bear with me with my voice. Of course, this was a great honor.
Welcome, guests.
And if you recall, the last time I was able to get up and present the math part or the math evaluation, we gave you guys a problem, and I think the only one that solved it was Kevin. I mean, come on.
Yet we let you do this again.
No, I'm not going to give you a math problem. This is social studies, although I could relate.
It's not likely, by the way.
But I do have one riddle to see if you guys are still on your toes. All right, you ready? What has one head, one foot, and four legs?
A bed. Table.
Yep.
A bed.
A bed. Thank you.
Yay. I don't have to do the math next time.
Debbie.
A table has a head and four legs.
I'd like to explore that further.
So, this committee, as you can see, was a very large one. We weren't there, all of us weren't there all of the time, but it was really an exciting committee for me because I told people that at one point in time, I was considering being a history teacher. And when I found out I couldn't write, but I could do math, I switched. So this was a lot of fun for me, and it really was. I have to say, the people on this committee did a fantastic job. And Andrea's going to give you our goals.
Great. And we have two people from the committee who will actually be doing the presentation, who I think are probably more skilled than we are.
The heavy work, the heavy work.
Right. So, objectives of this program evaluation, we're going to evaluate the extent to which Brighton students achieve the goals of the K-12 Social Studies Program and meet local, state, and national standards, and to evaluate the extent to which the district supports student achievement through curriculum development, instructional practices, and assessment alignment. So, with that, we'll have Maria.
Maria, carry on.
There you go.
Well, thank you so much for having us. So what we looked at were the goals for social studies achievement, and the first goal is that students will be able to utilize perspective and apply knowledge and skills to understand where things will come from, where we are now, and where we are going. So looking at those past-to-present connections. Also, another goal of social studies in our district is that students will be able to develop meaningful knowledge, values, and skills in order to make informed decisions that are culturally diverse in a democratic society and in our global community. And finally, our goal is to help students learn how to identify, analyze, and address current political and economic issues. So not only looking at the history, but looking at economics and looking at politics, both at the local, national, and international levels. So one of the facets of a program review is looking at the organizational supports that are in place. And the three areas that we looked at are curriculum, instruction, and assessment. In terms of curriculum, we looked at what systems are in place to ensure that our curriculum is updated and to make sure that the goals are being met. We also put a lot of emphasis on making sure that the curriculum is culturally sensitive and it reflects multiple perspectives and views in order to promote equity. For example, at the middle school, our seventh and eighth grade American history teachers, they selected textbooks for next year, and that was a big part, making sure that the material and the resources are culturally sensitive and different perspectives are introduced. Then our second organizational support that we looked at was instruction. And our focus here was whether our instructional practices reflect 21st century pedagogies, but then also connecting it to the Brighton Blueprint. And then finally, we looked at assessment. And assessment entails us, and it incorporates, how much do we know and to which extent do we know that students are meeting the goals? And when we think of assessment, we're thinking of multiple assessments, informal, performance-based, and so forth. So those are the organizational supports that we looked at. So in order to really see how our students are doing, we spent a lot of time at the program review committee looking at data sets, identifying those data sets, gathering the data, and then analyzing the data, and then determining what are areas of needs and areas of strengths. So one of the first sets of data that we looked at was our high school Regents exam. In 10th grade, the students take a global Regents exam, and in 11th grade, they take American history exam. So in those areas, we looked at overall achievement. How did our students do on the multiple choice section, the DBQ section, the documents and the DBQ essay, and then the thematic essay? So we looked at how they did overall. And then we also broke it down, and we looked at the thematic essay. And we analyzed how students did in terms of the breakdown within subgroups and how our students did versus different schools in the area. So we did a schools comparison. Another data set were AP scores. So at the high school, we have several AP courses that are offered through the Social Studies Department, like AP World History, AP American History, there's AP Psychology, there's AP Government and Politics, and so forth. So we looked at how our students did on those AP exams, we looked at longitudinal data, and we also made comparisons as well. Another area that we looked at were locally developed common tests, quizzes, midterms, finals, essays, and rubrics. So as a committee, what we did is we went back to our departments, and we gathered all the common assessments that we use, and then we brought the data in to see how students are doing in those areas. We also administered surveys, and all social studies teachers in the district took a survey, and all of our students, grades five through 12, also took a survey as well. And that was to determine how our students are feeling about their social studies classes, what they feel they've been learning, and so forth. And then there was also a focus group that was done at the high school level. And this was really powerful because committee members had the opportunity to ask questions to the students and for the students to share their thoughts on their social studies experiences. We also looked at our curriculum map, and we did an audit, and all of our curriculum is on EduTrina, so it was easy to pull the data and look at it. And then we also looked at a sampling of performance tasks from social studies units that are based on a common rubric. And finally, the last data set were common research projects, because we know that reading and writing and social studies, they all go hand in hand, and those common core literacy skills expand into all the content areas, social studies being one of them. So the common research projects that we looked at were grade six, where the students learn about ancient Egypt, and they pick a topic and they develop their own questions, and then they go to the library and they find how to use databases and they use noodle tools. And then we showcase all of the projects, and this is something that all of our sixth graders do. Seventh grade also has a similar project that they did this year around Thanksgiving and looking at texts. So that was a project that we looked at. Then at the high school level, we looked at the junior research paper, where students work in ELA class, but then there's also social studies connections. And then we also looked at the economic research paper. So those were our common research projects that we looked at how our students did. So as you can tell, we had a lot of data, both quantitative and qualitative data, which goes along with Barnhart's model of how to analyze data. And the first thing that we looked at are our areas of strength. So Brighton does very well on the New York State Test, and our students do exceptional work on the Regents exams, but we also want to make sure that students are challenged, and we are doing so in many different ways. One way is through AP exams. Our AP scores are very high. Our students are writing excellent thematic essays and document-based questions. But at the same time, we want to make sure that students are also writing higher-level responses based upon the new criteria and expectations that are part of the social studies framework, as well as the new Regents exam. So this year, actually in a couple of weeks, the World History Regents exam, the new one, will be administered, and that is different than the old one. And then AP, sorry, the Regents US History exam, the Regents exam, will also be changing as well. So we're looking at those new criteria and expectations. We also found that our students are engaged in activities that promote civic responsibilities, and that is huge in terms of our social studies framework, that civic responsibility portion. We did find that our kindergarten through fifth grade teachers felt that there was a lack of time dedicated to teaching social studies. However, students are doing wonderful things in their social studies classes right now, K through five, but that is something that we're going to continue to look at, the time that they have for social studies instruction. And then finally, another strength is that we're increasing our awareness of our diversity and the need to provide equitable learning opportunities through curriculum, resource selection, and access to advanced coursework. So those are some of the areas of strength. I do want to add, just as a plug for Eric and both myself, that our alumni are also very interested in social studies, since Eric and I both graduated from Brighton. So once again, I think we're doing extremely well in social studies, and students are eager to come into social studies class, and they're excited about learning. So thank you, and then Eric.
Thank you, Maria. Baron's representing barons up here, for sure. Thank you, Maria. And I'll pick up with areas of need that we developed in this process. The first is professional development, and what we found is that professional development needs varied by building. This was evident particularly when we look at the new social studies framework that came out a few years ago from the state. Different buildings have different levels of comfort with the framework itself, and that revealed some different needs for professional development moving forward. A lot of that is going to be on the buildings themselves, identifying what their own needs are and in order what they need to grow. And so we expect to hear more from the buildings about that and to move forward to professional development accordingly. Also, an area of need would be a systematic way to look at curriculum, particularly across or between grade levels. And again, there was some difference between buildings on this, particularly that leap from fifth grade to sixth grade, the leap from eighth grade to ninth grade, but it's really important that we have an area, or at least a system, in which we can communicate the curriculum, not just between buildings, but also just across grade levels. Consistency in student experience is a high degree of need, and obviously, there's some independence, a lot of independence, that comes with the level of professionalism that you get from the teachers in Brighton. We want to make sure that students have a consistent experience when they do come to Brighton, particularly in the social studies classes, and that having different teachers doesn't necessarily constitute having a completely different social studies experience. So that's an area of need that we need to look at within the grade levels and within the offerings. Another area of need, documenting curriculum and updating it as we go. It's very important to record our curriculum as a form of not just record, but also communication with parents and families and teachers within the building as well. An area of need being assessment variety and balance as well was identified. You know, traditional assessment has a place in the classroom, it can be very effective, but other forms of assessment, being performance-based assessments and different alternative assessments, also prove to be very valuable, and so in terms of exploring that in the future, that's an area that we should explore. And then finally, something that's been discussed in the curriculum council and across the district, especially with the blueprint, excuse me, is equity and access into AP courses, and that work is moving forward. We're exploring different pathways in order to provide that, but in this program review, it was particularly pertinent to the social studies APs that we offer. In terms of recommendations, this is an important part of our report. We recommend committing to continued discussion and action regarding balancing content and skills within the social studies. As Maria alluded to, the social studies are a lot of times history and content, but also it's about reading and writing and some skill-based work as well. So as professionals, there's an ongoing discussion as to that balance and what that balance is. And that balance, because of the way society is, is constantly shifting. So it's our recommendation that as professionals, we keep that conversation going about what the correct balance will be. That we also develop and implement culturally relevant curriculum and resources, and this, again, for those of you who have been doing work with curriculum council, this is something that's been an emphasis, and actually, this year, this was the common thread throughout all the meetings, was identifying and developing culturally relevant curriculum and culturally relevant and appropriate resources as well. Another recommendation is to foster and identify and move forward with opportunities to collaborate between the buildings. I think this was something that became very apparent. When you get all the different social studies faculty in one room from different buildings, you realize how little we know about the other buildings. And that's just part of the gig, it's part of, you know, how we exist, but in order to identify ways we can collaborate in the future, that would be a very, very strong benefit to the district and to the departments. We also recommend building stronger connections between social studies courses and the idea of community and citizenship. And this is kind of funny, because the teachers feel that there's a real strong connection between social studies and citizenship, and we make it our job in order to connect those things. But what we found out from the students is that they don't always associate the social studies with the actual citizenship of the day. And so it's on us to move forward with that, and we're going to try and explore ways that we can make a more direct connection between citizenship, action in the community, and also our social studies courses. We recommend pursuing professional development based upon the needs and the areas of growth identified by staff. Again, that goes back to our first area of need, but I think it's vital that we look at the buildings and what their needs are in terms of meeting the faculty and where they need it most, and trying to push forward with that. We recommend evaluating contact time for student benefit, and as Maria alluded to, this is particularly relevant to the K-5 teachers. They're pulled in so many different directions, and they have so many different responsibilities that, you know, evaluating the contact time in terms of social studies would be a really important thing to move forward in the future, but there's also opportunities to evaluate that with 612 as well as we move forward. And finally, to continue to implement curriculum assessments that are developed by our staff, high-quality curriculum, high-quality, varied assessments. I think, just to drive home the point of that last one, one thing we discovered as a group, and I don't think this is a discovery, I think it's a reinforcement of the fact, is that we have really high-quality professional faculty that are working very hard with one goal in mind, and that's to continue to benefit our students in this way. So on that note, questions?
Wonderful. I think one of the things I noticed, Eric, into the group, I think the, first of all, I think we're all very appreciative that the group was able to weave in that work that's being done in multiple locations. You mentioned curriculum council especially, but the cultural responsiveness to what we do. So I know we're able to work through that, and it's evident in the report. I also am interested, I think there's so much effort around the country in some quarters to bring back, if you will, what have always been known as just civics courses, right? So I think the connection, you mentioned there at the header of that slide, the connection between citizenship and the work that we do throughout social studies curriculum is probably the best way for us to go about that, I guess is just my two cents on that. So I'm glad that that was recognized, and I'm sure there was some discussion around that. So to the extent that, and again, part of it is the world we're in today and the last few years of activity politically, but that's one of those areas that I think the general public in many areas is saying, you know, shouldn't more civics education take place? So I appreciate that that was recognized and that you folks have got a handle on that. So anything else? And certainly, to our two board members, thank you for your participation and really starting the presentation up with a bang, but really, thanks to everybody. You know, this process that we go through, we talk about it every time, there's a review, it's so important to the work that we do, and everyone, it doesn't work unless people devote their time to it. So parents, board members, but our staff, who are really the forefront, thank you for everybody's participation and passion for it, and for being here this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to the next steps always. And continuing along with our evaluation tonight, Dr. Leener and our art program evaluation. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and highlight the work that has happened with the art program evaluation over the past year. I was blessed with this group to have nearly every member of the art department across the district participating in this, and so having the multiple perspectives across all of our buildings was extremely helpful. Also joined by Katie Kuzek and Karen Hatch, representing the PTSA and the Board of Education in our review. And I was just really pleased with the work that we were able to accomplish this year as we looked at art in grades one through 12 in the Brighton School District, and then also thinking forward to what the future may hold for us as we begin to expand our early childhood initiatives a couple of years from now. Just as an aside, by the way, all the artwork that you'll see decorating each of the slides are actually all original pieces created by students in our district, as well as some snapshots from classrooms where students are actually creating that work. So the goals of our work as we embarked on our program evaluation and our program review this year were as follows. The first thing we wanted to make sure that we did is we stepped back and we really looked at the why. We wanted to make sure that we had a clear mission and approach for art instruction that tied all of the work that happens in all four of our buildings together, so that we had an ability to articulate that to our community. So I'll share that work with you today. We also wanted to make sure that as we move forward with new standards at the national and state level, that we conducted a thorough alignment of our visual art curriculum to those art standards at both the national and state level. Through that alignment, we also wanted to make sure that if there were future opportunities for our students to participate in art and to share the work that they're doing, that we identified those. And we also feel very strongly in the art department that we have an amazing community that we work, and many of us live and raise our families in, and we want to make sure that we identify the opportunities to enhance connections between the work that's happening in classrooms and the community at MARC. So you'll hear a little bit about some ideas moving forward and some active projects that are happening currently. In the arts, we don't have a gigantic suite of standardized testing, thank goodness, in that regard. As a science guy, I was a little jealous listening to the social studies folks talking about AP exams and Regents exams, but one of the things that I've learned over the last couple of years, and specifically through the program evaluation this last year, to appreciate, is that art is, the art classrooms are places where kids are exploring their learning and their own development as young human beings in a much different way. And I've really come to appreciate the work that the art teachers and the environments that they've created to allow students to develop other sides of themselves beyond the standardized test. So I'm pleased to share with you some of the things that I've learned, but also some of the things we've learned from the students. So we looked at our grades one through 12 art curriculum, and we discovered some things along the way in that examination. We looked at our enrollment and our demographic data, especially at the high school level, where students were making choices to take art classes. And our biggest area of data that we really took time to analyze beyond the alignment of the curriculum was we talked to students. It was very early in the process, we went back and forth around, do we do surveys? What do the surveys tell us? We've done surveys in the past. What are other ways to get at what students want to tell us about what's good about our program, and then what are the areas where we could improve? So we decided to conduct focus groups, and we did that with groups, small groups of about five in size each time at both the middle school and the high school, and what the kids shared with us were really fascinating and really informed our work moving forward. It's always fun to sit in the lunchroom with a bunch of middle school kids and ask them, how are things going in art class? And what are you learning, and what do you like, and what could we do better? So let's start with the why, the visual art philosophy and mission. The first thing that we wanted to make sure is that we recognize the uniqueness of students, and that we provided the opportunities to identify where their strengths are and then provide appropriate instruction to develop their voice, which we felt was very, very important, and we heard that from students, as you'll see in a couple of minutes. We also wanted to make sure that we recognize and communicate that art is an essential element within the school and plays a key role in the development of the whole child. We also recognize that when students are creating, they're at the highest level of the work that they do in schools. And that very act of creating with their hands and with their minds really reflected a very high level of thinking on their part. It's nice to look around the buildings and see the artwork that the students create. I've become really fascinated with talking to the student artists and finding out what's behind what they create, and they never cease to amaze me in their explanations. Our teachers have focused tirelessly on creating the environment where kids are comfortable taking risks. That's a key component in the work as we've gone throughout the year, and we felt it was very important to make sure that it was expressed in our philosophy statement, that when students are in the classrooms, they're in a safe place, they can take risks, they can share ideas with one another without fear of judgment, and their learning in the long term is benefited from that. And last but certainly not least, the creation of art also provides a foundation that helps kids learn new pathways of thinking, new ways to solve problems, and new ways to understand the world around them. This process leads to innovation, creativity, and our goal, lifelong learning, whether students continue in the arts or use what they learn in the art classroom to support their learning in other areas. So that was our first step. We wanted to make sure that before we moved any further, that we had a really clear understanding of what we believed as a department was important for kids as they entered our classrooms and as we designed the activities and the lessons that we would engage them in. So then we talked with the kids, and it was always interesting to hear what they have to say. So I picked a couple of snippets that highlighted things that were doing well and ideas that helped propel our discussions moving forward as we went through the evaluation process. So one student said, "Art allows you to think above and beyond. You learn how to do your own thing and not have to be like everybody else." Individuality, student agency, the importance of students owning the work that they're engaged in came out from this quote. Art lets you bend the rules. In art, you take on problems and find your own way to find a solution. So again, giving students the space and the support they need to solve the problems, but let them do it, is what we took away from that quote. I just kind of liked this one. One student said at the end of one of the focus groups, it was at the middle school, "I think Brighton has one of the best programs around. We're lucky to have access to everything we have, and we really are fortunate, and we recognize that, all across the arts, but especially in the visual arts, that we have things that other schools don't have, and we have you to thank for that, and we have our community to thank for that." And the kids recognize it. I believe this student came to us recently from another school district and has found a home here. An idea, maybe we could add art into other classes, like do an animated story in English Language Arts. We did some of that in extended studies using StoryJumper software. It's a great idea. From that, we began discussions talking about what From that, we began discussions talking about what are the ways that art and other subject areas have crossover in terms of our learning objectives. My teachers are really supportive, very easygoing and accommodated people's needs. That led me to appreciate being in their classes. And when we create that kind of environment, we set the stage for the learning that we want to see happen with our children. I feel like I had a lot of tools in my toolbox. When I started doing art at the high school, I was prepared to build on those basics. That came from the kids and it really gave us an opportunity to reflect on the importance of talking to one another across buildings. We talk about that eight-go-nine transition, the five-go-six transition, and the importance of making sure that the collaboration takes place all across the district, at a personal level, at a professional level, and certainly through the way we articulate our curriculum. I'm definitely a fan of classes where I can take control of the direction I'm going with my work. This was a high school student. This was a student that had some rocky roads along the way, but has found a home in the art classroom and has been given an opportunity to pursue some passions and is now leveraging that into success in other areas as well. It's about finding that spot where the relationship is strong and can be leveraged to help the student cross their day. I didn't plan on finding my voice as a person in art class, but I'm really glad I took art and fell in love with making art so I could find my voice. Doesn't that kind of sum up what we want for all of our children? To create the environment that they can find themselves and then be productive. And finally, I really feel proud of the products that I make in art class and it keeps me coming back for more. So from the mouths of babes, big themes started to emerge, a big theme about relationships, about safety, about risk-taking, about collaboration. In general, a feeling of positivity around art from the students, the ability to find their voice, to develop confidence, to engage in rigorous coursework that didn't seem rigorous until they looked back and realized that they had created something that they didn't think they could have created. Being encouraged to show creativity and given the opportunity to show pride and accomplishments. That was the general feeling coming from the students. They also expressed a desire, a need, and a feeling that it's important to develop a strong foundation, to put the paint on the palette, if you will, so that they can use it later on moving forward. They spoke to us about flexibility and ownership, that student agency theme that emerged. The idea of being supported to learn how to grapple with time management and project management and make decisions and then reflect on those and to develop self-advocacy. So all of this led to our next steps, which was really looking closely at our curriculum and asking ourselves, are these things reflected in there? We identified a couple of areas of future opportunities in that reflection. Students have a desire to have a digital media experience in middle school. We have photography classes. At the high school, we integrate some digital media in classes across the high school experience. They showed us their cell phones, they showed us the tablets that they're using and they want to use them in art. Students have a strong interest in finding more ways to share their work with a greater audience. The idea of shows, formal ones and informal ones. They also expressed to us, there's this thing out there called Instagram. Could we use it with our artwork? Good idea. Let's figure out how we can do that. So we have a job to do as adults. They're also interested in a deeper exploration of career options in the arts. So again, food for thought for us as adults. All that has to fit into the New York State standards, which are brand new for us. They've been recently adopted at the national and state level and they encourage us to challenge students in four areas, the areas of creating, producing, responding, and connecting. Give us very broad latitude in terms of the work that we're able to do, but also challenge us in the area of digital media strand in the arts. And also challenges us to go back to our curriculum and articulate it clearly so that others can benefit from it. We have a very good idea amongst our group, we just haven't articulated that. So that would be one of our recommendations moving forward. And then we also talked about the opportunities that we may be able to explore around some new coursework that may be more accessible to a broader group of students. Contemporary crafts, textiles, fashion design came up as an idea that tie in with the New York State standards as well and the opportunity to create those digital art strands that starts early with students and works their way through our entire one through 12 experience. So coming from all that, our recommendations and next steps, this group has already seen the Understanding Design Course and we're very excited to be moving that forward. This started about a year ago, really in a formal way. It's an interdisciplinary technology in art class and really bridges the gap between two curricular areas. We're really excited about that. We actually have more students have requested it that we can actually accommodate, so we have a waiting list for that. There's a high level of student interest in that. Over the summer, we're hoping to move forward with curriculum alignment and documentation. We've done the alignment piece. We now want to make sure that it's documented in eDOctrina so that as we move forward as an organization, that can continue to be used as a tool to help us in planning perspective. We also are recommending that we look at our current art sequence for digital media strand opportunities throughout the program for our students and to also examine our sequences of courses at BHS to ensure that our students are ready for careers and college if they choose to pursue art directly from high school or move into that as a future study in college. And lastly, to continue to identify art outreach opportunities in the community and as we think about early childhood initiatives, begin to have conversations around kindergarten art programs in school districts around the area to see how they're supporting students at that level as we begin to prepare for that in our district. So with that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mike. And while you're here, I guess, first of all, we just also appreciate our visual arts program and our faculty and what a great part of a Brighton education we always talk about that it is. And having the comments from the students is just wonderful and we continue to appreciate everyone facilitating the artwork throughout the district. We love what happens in our room all the time and it's nice to come in and be surprised every once in a while about everything that's new. And, you know, mentioning the ongoing one, grade one through 12 art show, I think still has a little bit longer to run at the high school. So it's just a great display and a great, every building that you walk in has got student art displayed and just to really, you can't help but smile and appreciate. And thank you to everybody that worked on the evaluation on this committee also. Karen was our representative and, you know, it's not the same kind of a curricular area, but it's really important, as you well laid out, that we do evaluate all these areas in detail every so often. So thank you for bringing it tonight.
Thank you very much, Mark. And I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Jed Coons, who's in the audience today. Without his leadership, none of this would be happening. So hats off to Jed. Thank you very much for all of your work as well.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Oh, we give him a hand. Next up tonight, we have our principal reports and we will start out by hearing from Council Rock Primary School and Matt Tappan.
We realize as principals that this is our last report for the year, so it's a lot to pack in.
Unless we, you know, there's always a possibility of having to clean up and add some things.
I'll start again.
Schedule.
We, as principals, realize that this is the last report that we're going to give. Unless otherwise.
So you poured everything into it.
So we've had a lot going on at Council Rock. We had our bike and walk to school week. We didn't have totals because we didn't kind of keep track of that, but that bike rack in the bottom right-hand corner is what they look like each day. And I think the great way, we've shifted over the years how we've approached this. We had kind of a day and I remember I led like a parade of people because Council Rock doesn't have the easiest location for this. So we parked kind of at the corner of Clover and like people parked and it didn't really encourage what we were hoping is people to naturally continue to walk and bike to school. And this event, kind of having it throughout the week and not a specific event, has really, really helped, whoops, helped us kind of have people realize. I mean, I had kids go, you know, we can do this more than this week. And I said, yes, you could. So really successful, thanks to our wellness committee for organizing and a lot of parent volunteers. The PTSA really came through for us to helping people get parked and stickers and sign the big board that says they biked or walked to school. So last month I presented, we did a fundraiser for the Adopt a Whale Project and our goal was a thousand dollars, if you remember. We were going to get to name a whale. Well, I'm so excited to say that we raised a grand total of $1,235.84, which means on the same day that our community was voting for our budget and for our Board of Education, our kids were voting on the name and we chose Boomerang. So Boomerang is the name. Now here, you know, we celebrated Dave back last night as Citizen of the Year and he certainly was incredibly generous bringing us that project. But here's what I loved is that when we were naming the whale and coming up with choices, the second grade classes that came up with those choices said, do we have a picture of the whale? And I said, why do you need a picture? And they said, Mr. Tappan, the only way you name a whale is by the tail and the tail is like its fingerprint and you know that no whale has the same, no two whales. And I was like, wow, okay, yep. So we did have a picture and that is why Boomerang won because the whale tail looked the most like a boomerang. So really super excited and proud of our, proud of our kids for, you know, again, their outreach. Just another example of our community outreach. We held our volunteer reception this year and again, departing from what we have normally done. I've normally had it at like nine o'clock in the morning and it was always odd to me. Where I've been before, it's never been that way, but I was there celebrating wonderful volunteers, but none of my teachers or staff could be there. So this year I moved it to an after-school event and all of my teachers were able to come. My teachers actually did the food to thank the volunteers. They did the preparation and signed up for dessert and for all kinds of treats. And it was just a lovely event that, you know, was a great honoring of all the great volunteers we have at Council Rock and beyond. And then in our music classes, you know, we have a great connection with Eastman School of Music. Lisa Button was able to get Eastman-to-go concerts and we had several concerts where our students were able to experience different instruments and different amazing presentations by Eastman students. Coming up, so this Friday, the 25th, is an early release day. Morning kindergarten attends, which means a certain McGowan will not come to school, Dr. McGowan, because she will have the afternoon off, so.
She's planning on visiting with Boomerang, so I don't know what your plan is around that.
Okay, great. So kindergarten will be dismissed at their normal time at 11:00. First and second grade will be dismissed at 11:30. Monday, no school for Memorial Day. On Friday, June 1st, kindergarteners will eat at school and lots of information has been sent home, but it's their first introduction to the cafeteria. Friday, June 8th, is our play day. Monday, the 11th, is the graduation parade where we are so excited for our high school graduates to come back through Council Rock. Tuesday, the 19th, is hot dog roast day and then the last day of classes. So I have French Roads connected here and I'm going to invite Dr. Rio up. This is unprecedented. I'm not asking, but the reason that we are going to do that is because I had about four slides that I was going to present and then Allison said, I've already got those four slides because we've been doing a lot of work with the second to third grade, or as we call it, the two-go-three transition. So we're going to present that a little bit together and we combined our presentations.
Collaboration.
Yes.
Outstanding.
That's a way to make a point right there.
And I'm not going to upset the order.
Good job.
All right. So this is kind of just a little sneak peek at the work we've been doing around our transition for two-go-three and getting ready for our second graders to come over to French Road. Matt and I visited early May, all of the classrooms together, which was great, just quick pop-ins to say hi to the kids so they could see who I was and tell them about all these awesome things that are coming up, which got them really excited, which we were happy for. We've had teachers popping over to Council Rock regularly to meet, you know, special education teachers, counseling visits, lots of things ongoing from beginning of May, still going on right now. In early May, we had our PTSA meeting at FRES, which was our Council Rock parents to talk about transition. And we had a nice group of mostly second grade students there to hear about what happens on the transition from Council Rock to FRES. That was great. Then we had our second grade orientation at FRES where you'll see in a few slides, we had a full house, not even enough seats for everybody at FRES, awesome night with our kids, which we'll talk more about that in a few minutes.
And just yesterday, we took our annual, Mr. Tappan messed up, trip to French Road that has now turned into an awesome collaboration and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Today, Allison and I sat with each of the second grade teachers and a team from French Road, three third grade teachers, with each second grade teacher to go through their class lists and talk about each of their students' strengths, things that French Road needs to know. And then the PTSA has added a second grade only, which is a special treat for them, moving night at French Road to kind of help transition. And they will be doing cloudy with a chance of meatballs on June 5th. Dr. Rio and I both will be there, so we're really excited about everything that we've been able to do, so.
So here's a little sneak peek from our second grade orientation at FRES. We did it a little bit differently this year than in the past. There's a picture of the cafetorium of everyone that was there. We had some third grade teachers and our counseling staff there serving ice cream. Look how excited they are there. They enjoyed that. And the addition that was really great was we had probably, I think, 12 student council members come, so 12 of our fifth grade student council members came, talked a little bit about things that they love about French Road to get the kids excited and then organized tours throughout the school. So those went really well. So they had their tour guide sticks, which I don't have a picture of in here, and they had a map where we planned out where they were going to go and they talked about all the things that, to get the kids excited about FRES. It was really great. So they had these multiple groups running through the tours. People were getting ice cream. It was a really good time.
We talked a little bit yesterday, so when we originally did this trip, we just, we came to French Road, a second grade, we went right to the cafetorium, heard the performance from the awesome chorus and the chamber orchestra, and then skedaddled back to Council Rock. This year, Dr. Rio added in a connection between each of our second grades and a third grade classroom. Letters were exchanged between the students, the third grade students wrote letters to our second graders telling them what they loved about French Road, what they were so excited about. And then on this day, those classes got to visit each other, make the connection. Each kid got to share with their pen pal, talk for about 20 minutes, learn a little bit more, and then come down for the awesome concert. And there's Dr. Rio and I with everyone in the background and our two counselors who are doing all kinds of conversations. So just a really great day and the kids were so excited. You know, so we've transitioned with their families, we've transitioned with their teachers, the comfort of their teachers, and we know they are really ready to make that leap to French Road.
Thanks.
Now I turn it back.
Thank you. All right. Now we're on to French Road. Thanks, Mr. Tappan. So this is our first official FRES yearbook cover contest winner. So we, our student council put together a great contest for our yearbook cover. We had so many entries. We have a lot of them that will be displayed through the yearbook, but this is Jade Delanio who drew that cover that you see right there and that will be on our yearbook this year. So that was really exciting for our kids. They got to vote on which cover they liked the best and the student council was excited to take a lead in setting that up. We also had our bike to school day and we had 110 bikers and 95 walkers. Picture of the bike racks and we had brought in two extra bike racks and still overflowing, put some bikes in the courtyard as well. We had a great turnout, lots of families. If you drove down Edgewood, you would see lots of children riding their bikes and walking to school, which was really great. Lots of people who do it every day and then some more families as well. All the way back to last month, which seems like an eternity ago, when Mrs. Spagnola presented here for me because I was at Frontier Field. So that was a beautiful night. Next year, we'll go a little bit more into May, so it was a little chilly out still, but our kids did a great job. They had an awesome time, they felt really special, they sounded beautiful and it was a great night for them to perform at Frontier Field. Our third grade students and teachers had a visit from Rochester Area Performing Arts and in, to tie into their unit around fairy tales and fables, they had a performance of Rumpelstiltskin. And that was really awesome. They came and did a performance right in our cafetorium, so we didn't have to go anywhere, which was great. The kids loved it. It was interactive, they came out into the audience and asked the kids questions and, you know, it was really great for the kids to make that kind of. know, it was really great for the kids to make that connection to the work that they do in the classroom. We have concert season going on right now, so chorus, fifth grade chorus and orchestra. And Mr. McVeigh, our librarian, I wanted to point out, in case you didn't know this, he is our accompanist to the fifth grade chorus. So, um, he has multiple talents, Mr. McVeigh, and he is a fabulous librarian, but he also is playing the music for our chorus. The kids love that. It's really special. So that was a great night. We also had a, um, band concert last week or so. Clean sweep, where we had probably sixty, um, students and families come to French Road to, uh, work on cleaning up around the school, and just in about two hours' time, they did a ton of work. Lots of multing around the school, um, cleaning out all of our courtyards. We had teachers come as well. The kids, parents, families, teachers were awesome. And also, what was really fabulous that I'm so excited about, because one's right outside my window, we planted twelve new trees. So, um, here's some pictures of the courtyards. And then Color Bright and Green donated twelve trees for us to plant on our property. So we had teachers, um, family members, and then students. On the bottom right there, some of our TCMS students who came back a little bit early to help us plant the trees from when they were cleaning up one of the parks. So we had a great team effort. In that short time, we got all the trees planted. When you drive down, um, Edgewood, you could see them, and there's some at the front of the school as well. We had an author visit, too. We had Brian Yanish come to FRES. He is the author of the two books that you see there, the Build It book and Junk Retunk. Great connection to our Zero Waste Initiative, because, um, his work talks about how to take things that are junk or waste and turn it into something else. And he did, um, an assembly for each one of our grade levels. He had lunch with, um, three different groups of kids, and he stayed after school that day for our Tree Hugger Club, which they thought was pretty awesome. So that was a really great day with him visiting our school, and I see kids right now all over the place, making things out of anything they find. Toilet paper rolls are especially popular right now. Our fifth grade on Friday last week did their annual, second annual, Human Rights Day, and on this day, they looked at topics around human rights issues that they've learned about over the course of the school year, really, including, um, the things that are listed here, immigration, Holocaust, underground women slavery, civil rights, Great Depression. And the approach that they took was, um, answering, having kids answer an essential question by, um, developing questions that they want to learn about within the topic, and then diving into that research on their own. Kids presented information in lots of different ways across the classrooms. Some classes did kind of a group project, some had smaller projects that were, um, that kids worked on. This is a picture of, um, Mrs. Whidor's class, and they were looking at the Great Depression. You can see some pictures of the, these are more pictures from her class. As you walk through this museum walk, you would stop, and kids would tell you about a piece of, um, history for you to learn about, which they had chosen to research and share about. It was a really powerful experience for the kids, and they did a fabulous job. Mrs. Dubois's class, immigration. I mean, walking through here was really just like you were taking a step into the time period of what it was. And Mrs. Whitick, our, um, English as a Second Language teacher, had a wonderful, um, skit that her children did, who are children who have come to our country from all different places around the world, and they did a great, um, play around, um, the things that people experience as they enter our country. And they went through all the different time periods. It was really powerful. Well done. And upcoming events for us. So, um, tonight we have a concert going on right now at French Road. We have science testing starting tomorrow for our fourth grade. That is a, an extended window, as they just have one day where they do their, um, performance assessment. Half-day early dismissal on Friday, no school Monday. We have our school-wide photo on the twenty-ninth. We have a PTSA meeting with the principal on June fifth at nine-thirty, which we will have Brighton library, um, librarian Alyssa Schaefer, and our librarian Justin McVeigh will be there to talk about summer reading with parents. Field day. We have a fourth grade band concert coming up on the thirteenth, fourth grade strings concert on the fourteenth, and our Moving Up Day on the eighteenth. Lots of stuff going on at FRES, as well as everyone else, everywhere else. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Allison, and thank you for the transitioning and, uh, the presentation together. In seriousness, I think one of the things I mentioned to Dr. McGowan, I think letting our community know how we worked on that trend, we do it with every building, but that transition from Council Rock to French Road, the care and time that you all put into it and the teachers put into it, and it starts very early on, and I don't think people all fully appreciate and understand that, so that when those young folks start over there as third graders, it's, let's just go, you know. So, thank you so much. And so now Rob, Tom, aren't you up there with Rob now together?
I guess.
Oh, he did, he, yeah, he's a solo act, you know. He's a solo, okay. Anyway, Twelve Corners Middle School, Rob Thomas.
Good evening, everybody. I can't believe how much is going on at the middle school. I feel like one day could make up a board presentation. I've tried to distill it down, but the, the things our staff are offering kids, the support that the parents provide for the students, and the participation of the kids continues to be phenomenal at our school, and I'm sure all, all of the schools, but not quite as good as middle school. Uh, the Zero Waste Initiative, the seventh and eighth graders are still lagging behind, but they've actually shown some improvement in the month of April, and with two months to measure, we're hoping for the best. We also participated in Bike or Walk to School Day. Almost two hundred participants, a lot of parents helped out, and the kids signed in. And to totally negate any health benefits from the exercise, students were raffled off ice creams who were winners, or who participated. But not everybody got a ice cream, so at least some people were able to get the health benefit. And speaking of health benefit, uh, the sports season is, uh, winding down, actually, at the modified level, but with two hundred and forty-nine students on fourteen different teams, from the modified all the way to the varsity, we have something going on every night. Our, our girls' lacrosse was on the backfield this evening, and I, they were up four-two when I left, so they're doing a great job, too. Thanks to all the coaches and, and parents for being part of those programs for our kids. And on, uh, in, in school teams, we also have a chess team that's been competing. They just wrapped up their season. They did really well, coached by Carrie Welling. And Vivian Lopez-French coaches our academic challenge ball team, and if you ever go to one of those competitions and get, can get half of the answers the kids get, you're doing pretty well. These kids are, are brilliant. Uh, the art show at, at BHS was a lot of fun for first through twelfth grade, uh, and two of our teachers pictured here, along with a lot of the art that, uh, Mike Leener talked about tonight. Our PTSA teacher appreciation lunch, and I'd like to thank the parents. We will have them in to appreciate all the volunteers as well on June fourth. Probably not as nicely as Matt did at Council Rock, but, uh, we're getting started there, and it was a really welcome event on, uh, May eighth, I believe. Our ELA teachers in sixth grade have been preparing the kids for the Festival of Fables. Stories our students write, direct, and star in for the parents and the community on three different dates, depending on what team the kids are on. There's one more Festival of Fables coming up. Mary Poppins Junior was a huge success at the high school last Friday and Saturday. So many, uh, students involved, over sixty students in three grades, uh, a, a great act, and one of my favorite musicals for, for the kids to perform. Uh, each month, students have a showcase at our faculty meeting, and this month, students are presented on Ramadan, so we would know how to support the students through this holiday, uh, month for those kids. And, uh, they did a fantastic job under the leadership of Kristen Halligan. Uh, the St. John Fisher Science Exploration Days were this past Friday. Great chance for students to visit the college and see so many different science displays and get involved in those, uh, uh, experiences. Mrs. Bedea is pictured in the hazmat suit. We're thinking about having all the people that supervise lunch wear one of those at the middle school. Uh, while the students were on foreign language trips, students in eighth grade that didn't participate had the opportunity to participate in flamenco dancing in our main gym in the morning, which was a lot of fun on Friday. Uh, Friday afternoon, Sister Barbara Lum presented. She was a nurse through, uh, in Selma, Alabama, through the civil rights, uh, era in the fifties and sixties, and her story was phenomenal. Eighty-two years old, had our sixth graders in total silence as she recounted some of the events and activities that they are learning about in their own sixth grade social studies classes. Awful nice of Barbara to come in and see our kids. Katie Cantz helped organize that. Our jazz band played at the Liloak Festival last week. It wasn't windy. The music stayed on the stands, and the music was phenomenal. Our foreign language trips, all beautiful weather trips to Quebec, New York City, and the German trip to Vermont. Now, when you see the Hotel Frantiac with the Quebec kids, uh, the Spanish kids are at St. Patrick's Cathedral, then you see the German kids, uh, in front of the Ben &amp; Jerry's ice cream, uh, bus, you know. It's, might not be as authentic as going to Germany, but they do a lot of experiences that are authentic when they're there. And we had a class picture taken. I couldn't believe how quickly our eighth graders were able to leave the lunchroom, get outside and organize in the shape of their graduation year. Uh, my brother actually took this shot, and we're gonna be giving each one of the students, the PTSA is gonna be giving each one of our eighth graders this picture at the closure party. If they don't attend the closure party, they'll get it the following Monday. But it kind of has that motion, you know, they're, they're on the TCMS field, but the high school's in the background waiting for them. Uh, some reminders, our French Road orientations, which, uh, Dr. Rio will not be joining me, I, I understand, are tomorrow at, uh, at the middle school. No, actually, we, we've got, we've got a great program. The kids, it's very similar to what they're doing from second to third grade, and we'll have, uh, students with their families at four-thirty and six-thirty. They're one-hour orientations. All the information that we go through will be on our website the day after, if you're not able to attend. And, uh, students and parents and families are together during these, and you can pick either time that you'd like to attend. On June sixth, the PTSA meeting with the principal is with, uh, Mr. Nate Merritt, our athletic director, to talk about all the experiences and opportunities in athletics, and to talk about how to get signed up and, and be part of that, uh, be part of those programs. Our last day of classes is a full day on June twentieth, and on June twenty-first, we want all the students back for our end-of-the-year field trips to, to Seabreeze for sixth and seventh, and Darian Lake for the eighth graders. Uh, permission slips need to get back, uh, to the main office as soon as possible, but no later than June eighth. There are so many events coming up at the middle school, between the exams, concerts, uh, and so on. They're in the e-news. We send them home via, uh, email, and most of them are on the PTSA calendar as well, so please check those out when you can. That's it from the middle school.
Thank you very much, Rob. We appreciate that. Tom Hall, Brighton High School.
Should he just stay up there for his transition to ninth grade presentation?
Smooth transition.
Just so you know, that was like a unicorn, Rob Thomas just hugs Tom Hall.
But just...
Was there a camera on that?
For Dr. Rio's sake, I've had two different transition meetings, and we haven't seen Mr. Thomas at either of them, so.
Wow, this is really...
But that's all right. That's all right. We're family. We have such a good transition going anyway. It's just like...
I know, it just works.
Moving right over. Um, just a few highlights. Community readers program is in its fourteenth year, just finished its fourteenth year. Jim Quinnless runs that. Um, we're actually, uh, having an expansion. We're having more teachers in the department actually take part, most likely next year, and we've actually partnered, we're not going to do things directly, but spreading kind of this community readers program to other areas in Monroe and greater, uh, Rochester area community. Um, so there's several schools who are actually going to take part, most likely next year, in their communities, too. So it's pretty exciting. Brighton Clean Sweep and the Spring Cleanup Day, and, you know, going back to spring two thousand and two, Rob and I actually, through the Brighton Community Task Force, as it was called back in the day, uh, raked leaves, went to senior homes with students from the high school and the middle school, taking buses all around town. That's kind of where it started, and there's no Brighton Clean Sweep at the time. Um, and then two thousand and eight, the town came on board and, and started the Clean Sweep, FRES, Middle School, and, uh, the town, and then the high school, middle school, and French Road now. But there's one school missing still from the Clean Sweep, but, uh, I'll let you guess where that is. There's always something we could do, I'm sure. Um, but, uh, we're, we're trying to get him on board, too. I'm sure it'll come next year.
We're gonna send the Council Rockers out on Monroe Avenue, let them pick up trash or something.
We've got things they can do. Buddy up with our high school kids. We'll be ready to go. Hear that, Mr. Tappan? It's gonna be fun. Look at all these wonderful faces. They just can't wait to have a Council Rocker with them going around...
There you go.
...the school campus, cleaning up.
Mentoring cleanup.
A great turnout, though, this year. They cleaned the creek from, from, uh, Whitten all the way down to the Monroe Ave, uh, area, so that, that did a nice facelift, all the garbage at the end. It's a kind of a cool windy day, but it, overall, went well. Uh, we have our science research club at the high school. Jamie Porter, Adam, or I'm sorry, Brad Allen, took, um, twelve students over to the U of R. They did some research projects. They actually had some, you know, a dinner there, and, uh, got to participate in real, uh, lab experiences right within the lab on the campus. Our Muslim Student Association on, uh, Sunday headed to the farmer's market back in March, and just set up a booth, uh, to answer questions about being Muslim, and what does it mean to be Muslim. And they had a presentation, the whole three and a half or four hours that they're there, and, uh, I can say it, several visitors come to them. Um, so it's unbelievable to think our year's wrapping up with all the different, uh, activities we have. The award ceremony, again, this will be in the auditorium for the second year in a row this year, seven forty-five on June first. We have a special Regents exam being given on June fifth. Classes will be in session for everybody. Tenth graders will be taking that global in the gym. We're hoping for a cool day. Um, June eleventh, uh, last day of classes, actually, we're going to Council Rock and FRES that day for our senior parade. Um, last year we did it during exam week. This year we're doing it on the last day of classes. Then we're heading back for the countdown and senior ice cream social in the gym, because the field's not going to be available, so we're looking forward to that. Exams, rehearsal. Lots of things going on, but, uh, looking forward to a strong finish and graduation again for, uh, June nineteenth. Uh, doors open at five at our IT, and be looking forward to a ceremony. So, any questions?
Fantastic. We'll be over like that, Tom, so thank you for the update, the reminders, and all the best with the remaining weeks, so. Thank you so much, and again, thank you to all of our principals, uh, for what is the final schedule report update of the year, so. You never know how things evolve and develop. Yeah, you know, we try, and they're always ahead of the curve, though. They're, they're a savvy group, you know, and you gotta get it pretty early. All right, a couple of other items of business remaining this evening. Uh, first of all, may we have a motion, please, for approval of the BHS Living Environment textbook recommendation?
So move.
Second.
Uh, moved by Marv and seconded by Martha. Uh, this is a textbook recommendation that we had had to us previously, uh, submitted, uh, by Al Pacanahar, but on behalf of the whole selection committee. It is a new textbook for the Living Environment, uh, course for the Brighton High School Science Department. Does anybody have any questions or anything further?
I'd like to make a comment. I, you know, instead of, uh, saying there's a textbook available at Central Office that we can review, I think this was terrific. This should be like a model for any textbooker that comes away.
What was the recommendation that was sent to us?
Yeah. I could read it. I could understand it. I looked through the selection process. It was just, you know, and I don't have to, I don't know anything about biology, but this was great.
We'll, we'll put you on that review next time.
Yeah, thanks.
You're working your way through all the subject matter. And that's a really good point. You know, one of the things is, I think, we actually, we usually get a paper recommendation, and the book is available to us usually, always, but each department and each selection process, they handle it a little bit differently, and I, I think you're right. I think the way that this one was formatted and brought to us, likely because it was a science textbook and just help us, guide us, sort of thing, uh, it was done this way. So, uh, I think you're right, Marv. That was a great note. So, does anybody else have any thoughts, or? Thanks to everybody, and thanks for the department for their hard work at, at going through this. It's not easy work to go through the available text and come up with the right thing that fits, so.
No, that's correct.
So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, may we now have a motion, please, for approval of a memorandum of agreement, uh, between the district and the Brighton Teachers Association?
So, second.
Moved by Julene and seconded by Karen. This is a, a memorandum, as we mentioned, between the district and the BTA to clear up a situation involving one, uh, retired, uh, teacher, and all put together and said and done. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, motion, please, for approval of our consent agenda for this evening?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Martha. Consent agenda, as always, contains a few items. One of note, acceptance of gifts. We are very happy to thank Dave and Barb Snyderman for a gift of one hundred and eighty dollars to honor the class of twenty eighteen, and they've gifted that to the PTSA hardship grant account. So that's generous of them, and we thank them for that and accept it this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, Dr. McGowan, you have a couple of quick updates today?
Two quick comments. Oh, you, you already said quick, so I think you're trying to tell me something.
I said a couple of updates this evening. I didn't say, see, you're thinking it.
First and foremost, congratulations to Christine Treasure. She will be at, um, your next agenda, recommended by me to you for appointment as our Assistant Director of Humanities, K through eight, and of course, that includes foreign language. Also, at the high school level, Christine has been a, uh, as you... Christine has been a, a, as you know well, an Assistant Principal, Council Rock, and has been in that role as the intern throughout this year and done an excellent job. We're very excited for Christine, so congratulations to you, Christine.
Congratulations, and we look forward to the formal acceptance at end of June meeting, so thank you, and welcome again.
And I would just, a couple of other quick things, wanna make sure we again remind people that the track and uh field area is under construction and will be off limits throughout the summer and into September, uh just for people's safety, and frankly, if you look out there now, there is not a track for people to walk on.
That's right.
We try to communicate that far and wide, we'd like people to understand, and also to understand the, the reason for the timing, the, the time it takes to put the track down, to put the field down, and then for the track to cure, uh we are gonna be right up against the football schedule, the soccer schedule, fall sports schedule, and when homecoming is scheduled in September. There is no other way to do this if you're going to replace the, the turf, which needed to be replaced, and the track. Um, so we tried as best as we could to not inconvenience teams, but a few seasons uh here at the end had to shift alternate sites. Uh, limited disruption, easy for me to say, I'm not somebody getting ready for sectional competition, but we did our best to accommodate everybody. And then finally, congratulations to the community, eighty-seven and a half percent of voters said yes to the school budget, so thank you very much for your work on that, your guidance, your leadership, your support, Lou's financial leadership as well, and all the work done throughout our leadership team to present that, prepare that, and to our community for their support, we greatly appreciate that. We say thank you, of course, to Martha for her service and for all that she's done in